Well, good evening. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange. We will begin with an invocation to be offered by council member, Dr. W.T. Edmondson, to be followed by the pledge of allegiance, which tonight is going to be led by the members of BSA scouting troop 31 and led by Tasha Brauner. So at this time, if we will have the invocation by Dr. Edmondson?
Let's start off here. Oh God, our Father, we ask for blessings tonight upon this group of men. As we get ready to have the business of this city, we ask that you would bless this city, not only our city, but bless our state and bless our nation. God, we ask that you continue to keep your eyes upon us, let us be mindful of others, and let us make the right decisions that would benefit everyone in this city. And God, we will be kept, we give you praise and glory and honor. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
And then, if I could ask the members of troop 21 to come forward, or troop 31, come forward and lead us in the pledge?
Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If everyone else would be seated, but if I could ask the members of the troop to stay forward. Earlier today, I had the opportunity to recognize one of the members of the troop who recently became an Eagle Scout, but I wanted to give all five of these ladies from troop 31 the opportunity to introduce themselves to the council. So whoever would like to begin, introduce yourself, tell us a little about yourself, and maybe a little bit about the troop.
Hello, everyone. My name is Tasha Brauner. I'm currently the scribe and troop OA representative for troop 31, and I earned my Eagle Scout rank in January.
Congratulations.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lomay Dautrey. I am a live scout in troop 31, and I am assistant senior patrol leader.
Wonderful.
Hi, my name is Jessica Martinez. I'm the SPO of troop 31, and I'm a star scout.
Hi, I'm Lydia Brauner. I am one of patrol leaders for troop 31, and I am star.
Hi, I'm Hardy Johnson. I am the other patrol leader for troop 31, and I am currently a tenderfoot.
That's great. Well, we certainly appreciate you being with us tonight, leading us in the pledge. Appreciate everything that you're doing for our community through service, through BSA, and certainly appreciate your parents and your scout leaders and the members of Lloyd Presbyterian Church, who I understand are the sponsors for the troop. So appreciate you being with us tonight. Thank you very much.
Hold up, hold up. Come on up. Let's take a photo. Come on.
Councilman Gaskins would like a group photo. So if you could, if you could stand here.
How do you do it? Three fingers?
Alright, everybody, three fingers.
I don't think we're eligible for that.
We're all boys in heart.
Let's look over at Forrest in the back, and then come up to the ladies in the front.
Okay, and then look in front. Are they ready to go? Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you all very much. Okay. Council members have all been given a copy of the minutes of our regular council meeting held on February 23rd, as well as the special call council meeting held on March the 2nd. I would entertain a motion?
Would approve.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Under public hearings, we are here tonight to receive comments on a request to rezone 508 Greenville Street from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to C3 General Commercial. Ms. Kelsey?
Yes, sir. The public hearing has been properly advertised. At this point, we won't take any public comment.
Is there anyone in council chambers who would like to comment on this request? Seeing none, I will declare that public hearing closed, and we'll move on to a public hearing to receive comments on a request to rezone 507 Jenkins Street from R2 Residential to OIR Office Institutional Residential.
Again, Mr. Mayor, this public hearing was properly advertised, and we wouldn't take any comment at this time.
Is there anyone in council chambers who would like to be heard on this rezoning request? Seeing none, I will declare that public hearing closed, and we will move on to delegations. Delighted tonight to welcome Michael Strickland, who is the Troop County EMA Director. So, Michael, if you would come to the podium and make any comments you have for the council? You might need to raise the microphone up.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, gentlemen of the council. I appreciate you allowing me to come speak to you this evening. I know you have a busy agenda, so I'll try not to be too long-winded for you tonight. But I just wanted to come and introduce myself to the council. I'm trying to make the rounds of all of Troop County and all the cities to introduce myself. I know, I know a lot of people here already, but I'm just trying to get my face out there and let you hear my voice and let you know, yes, there is an EMA Director in Troop County. I started this position on January 21st of this year. Let me just give you a little of my background. I retired from Fayette County Fire after a 33-year career in Fayette County, where I retired as a captain. So my background is fire and EMS primarily. Back in October, I ended up having complete shoulder replacement, which put me down. It still got me a little bit down. I'm still doing rehab. Dr. Gore shaking your head, so you understand what I'm going through. I'm still doing rehab, so I was looking for the next chapter of my life, and this opportunity came open. And it's a fantastic opportunity for me to serve the city and the county that I live in. I've been a resident now in Troop County for four years and LaGrange for four years. As a lot of you know, my wife has very deep roots here. We're very proud to call LaGrange our home. So as the EMA Director, one of the common questions I get is what exactly does the EMA Director do? I get puzzled looks when I tell them I'm the EMA Director, and that's including some firefighters. So I have to do some education. I'm actually in the process of putting a presentation together that I hope to, I can, I can, I can share with y'all with some, with some facts and figures and pictures. But, you know, it's my aim, one of my aims is to, is to be as educational as I can, going around and meeting with, with whoever would like me to, to speak with them about emergency management in Troop County and what it means. But in a nutshell, you know, emergency management is just a lot of, a lot of pre-planning, preparing the community for events that may happen, whether it's weather-related, civil unrest, crowds that may come in, anything of that nature, having the plans and resources in place to deal with the event, respond to the event with local resources as needed, call upon mutual aid partners, call, call GEMA to come respond, and then if need be, if it's that big, call FEMA to come assist. And then we get into the recovery phase of it, you know, helping build LaGrange and Troop County back to the state it was before the event happened through, you know, cost recovery, you know, FEMA grants, GEMA grants, things like that, to let the community come back to its normal state. So in a nutshell, that's, that's what emergency management does. It's a lot of behind-the-scenes work. But one of the things that Mr. Eric Mosley charged me with was to go out and be known in the county and the community. So that's why I'm here tonight. I went and sat with Mayor Thornton in his office one afternoon. We had a very good conversation. He invited me here. I appreciate that. I've also met individually with Chief Deckmar. I've met with Chief John Brandt about the same thing, just, you know, introducing myself, making sure that we're all on the same page, and they know who I am. I think it's important that, you know, if events do happen, the first time somebody meets me is not at 3:00 in the morning as a tornado has come through. We have those pre-established relationships. You have my contact numbers so that we can be prepared as possible. It's also one of my duties to make sure that the County Emergency Operations Center is well-prepared and well-maintained. I have gone ahead and fully set it up, so I have an idea how it's set up. I invite any one of you that wants to come out there and take a look at it. I'll set it up for you so you know how it operates. One of the things that I had mentioned to Chief Deckmar was, was we have a mobile command post that Troop County's had for multiple years. Right now, we're getting a lot of use out of it at the COVID-19 vaccination clinics that are being held throughout the county, at the Bus Barn, down in West Point, up in Hogansville. So we're using that as a, as an area that people can go to, you know, use the restroom if needed, get away, step out of the elements a little bit. So that is always at the city of LaGrange's disposal if needed. I'll be happy to give you a tour of it, bring it up and show you one night what it's all capable of. I do want to mention just, just one more thing. A couple of years ago, the county has a mass notification system that was in place called Code Red. I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with that. A couple of years ago, the county transitioned to a platform called Civic Ready that they're now using for mass notifications. And I just want to put a little plug in on that to make sure that, you know, our citizenry of entire Troop County knows about it and will sign up for it. I actually spoke to our 911 director this afternoon to find out, you know, kind of what the numbers were. And so far, there's only about 3,000 citizens of Troop County signed up for it. So we're trying to come up with some methods. We can advertise that out to make sure the citizens are aware of it and take the opportunity to sign up for it to be notified in the event of an emergency. Now, as part of their signup process, they can choose which events they would like to be notified of. There's some things that have to go out to everybody's phone, but they can also kind of select what they want to be notified and how they want to be notified, whether they want to do it by text, or email, or phone call, or whatever means they choose. So I welcome this opportunity to come speak with you tonight. I look forward to working with each one of you going forward. And at this point, does anybody have any questions I could answer for them or clear anything up?
Michael, I appreciate you being here tonight and coming and sharing, and certainly we're delighted to have you onboard at the county and look forward to working with you. Hope that we don't, hope we don't need to work with you, but glad that you're here.
Yes, sir.
Questions or comments?
Yes, got a job for you. Okay, so are you involved in the COVID-19 vaccination program whatsoever?
I'm, I'm in the support role with Public Health.
Okay, so you're looking to get people signed up for Civic Ready?
Yes, sir.
And we're looking to get people to get the COVID-19 vaccination. Could it be possible that you could merge the two? In other words, information could be disseminated about the vaccination through the Civic Ready program?
Yes, sir.
And then that way, you would get a multitude of people to enter into the program, as well as be able to disperse information on how to get the vaccination?
Absolutely.
Does that work for you?
Yes, sir.
Does that work for council? I'm happy with it. I've had three cups of coffee.
I can definitely, I can definitely. I've seen with Mr. Lawson about that possibility. Yeah, I actually spoke with Public Health today, and she said they received a pretty large shipment in, and they're actually putting together some more dates for public vaccination.
Okay, can, can we, can we put you with Katie to kind of get that information out there about how to get in touch with Civic Ready?
Absolutely.
Sign up for it, and then that way, we can disseminate that information.
Yes, sir. Be happy to.
Okay. Anybody got any coffee?
Yes, sir, Dr. Gore.
Just a question. If somebody has a weather radio, you know, I've never had a weather radio, but I hear about this from time to time on television. Would it give you different information than what y'all might disseminate, or is it the same thing?
It's primarily the same. It's just another method of receiving the information. We encourage people to receive multiple sources of alerts from wherever they can, can sign up for. But, you know, you know, weather radios are typically, you know, stationed in someone's home versus, you know, the Civic Ready, which comes to your cell phone wherever you are on a mobile, the mobile situation.
All right. Thank you, Michael. Appreciate you being here.
Good night.
Also, under delegations, we're delighted to welcome Chris Ridgway, former LaGrange Police Department intern.
Chief Deckmar.
Chief Deckmar, would you make the introduction?
I would. I'd like to introduce Chris. We've had a relationship with Chris for about seven years. He came to us as an intern from, ooh, since I believe it was, yeah, Mike Wilson, and Mike Meredith called us and had him and Kathy that were looking for something to do in the summer. And that morphed into a kind of full-time, part-time position for the last seven years, either as an intern and then later as a cadet, who was responsible for riding a bicycle on the thread and also in the parks and reporting any issues to us. In addition to that, he is an RA while he was in college, when he graduated from high school, went to Georgia State. And I believe of the five cadets that we've had, he's the only one that decided to go to law school as opposed to come to work for the police department. So we're in the process of reevaluating our program. But we're very proud of Chris. He is a worker. He's got a wonderful work ethic, a great personality. He also works part-time at Starbucks, RA to help put himself through college. I mean, he has really earned the opportunities that he's had, and we're very proud of him. So, Chris.
Thank you, Chief Deckmar, for that introduction. Hello, Mayor Thornton and the council. Just, I'm just gonna say now, I'm not here to read you off my resume. I'm just here to basically tell you how the previous positions I've had in the past have gotten me to where I am today. So first off, as Chief Deckmar said, I was an intern with LaGrange Police Department. My title there was a civilian intern. So where I was, you know, I do like intern stuff, paperwork, takeout filing, and takeout trash, stuff like that. But it didn't evolve to, you know, working with other parts of the police department, which include code enforcement, animal control, and also, and more. I'm gonna say that. So I did that for three summers from, from August 2015 to 2017. And then I got the call from Chief Deckmar one day asking me to come back to be part of their police cadet program. And with that, I don't know, you all probably saw me riding around yellow shirt on a bike, rode over 25 miles per day in the summer. And I could truly say I met a lot of new faces. I seen a lot. And I can truly say it has helped LaGrange overall with deterring crime and also keeping the people, our citizens of LaGrange safe. And also, as the chief mentioned, I've been a Starbucks barista for five years now. However, I've retired in February to now get me to my new position as an intern with the Georgia Attorney's General's Office, which I have just came back from to speak with y'all today. And there I am, an ex-intern with the Public Policy and Legislative Affairs. And so I work directly with Chris Carr and his team to making sure that the laws from the Georgia General Assembly are going according to plan, and you know, that the public are able to, I guess, witness what's going on right now. So what I can say is, like Chief Deckmar said, work hard. And I'm not saying I've gotten these positions because I want to do them. They're all for a purpose. I plan on attending law school next fall. So I graduate this May. I'm currently a senior at Georgia State University, where I majored in political science and criminal justice. And also, as chief said, I'm a senior resident assistant, and I'm also involved in other programs such as the Presidential Ambassador Program of Georgia State and the Criminal Justice Association. So I'm just real big on helping people and being involved, you know, making sure I'm not only successful for myself, but also for my family and peers that are around me. So I thank Chief Deckmar. I thank everyone else I've worked with in the past, and I look forward to see, you know, coming back and helping LaGrange grow.
Let's thank Chris for his service to our community.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you all so much.
Chris, thank you for coming and sharing your experience. And thank you, obviously, for the work that you have done for the police department, for the citizens of LaGrange over the past few years. Thank you for coming and sharing with us where you are today and what you're working on today, and the accomplishments that you've had in your career, but also how you continue to represent LaGrange and represent LaGrange at the Attorney General's Office at Georgia State. Certainly, I know you're going to do very well in law school, and I commend you for that decision to go to law school. But, but I think you will, I think you will enjoy that experience. And certainly, General Carr is a good friend of mine, and I look forward to sending him a note, thanking him for, for all the work that, that, that y'all have been able to work on together. Appreciate that, appreciate that role and service. So and thank you for coming and bringing the story back to us.
Yes.
Because, you know, sometimes we, as you say, we've seen you around town. We see people around, you know, serving in these cadet roles, and, and it's great to know what an influence that has, a lasting influence on your life and, and on the community. So I'm very, I'm very grateful. Any comments from the council?
Just thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
Where are you planning on going to law school?
I want to stay in Georgia. My top choices are UGA, Georgia State, possibly Mercer. Out of state, I'm looking towards Duke, probably Howard. It just depends where I can get a financial scholarship, something like that. So, which also has the best opportunity. So I may, I may just stay in Georgia.
You may stay in Georgia?
Yes, sir.
You're gonna come back to LaGrange?
Yeah, I'm not gonna forget about LaGrange. I let everybody know I'm from LaGrange. Yeah, I'm still gonna come back. I'm not gonna be a stranger. People always say like, "Don't forget where you came from." Oh, trust me, I'm not. I'm not.
Well, we look forward to having you back as a member of the bar in a few years.
Yes, sir.
And don't forget about Emory. Emory's a good law school, too.
Okay.
Put in a plug for that.
That's all matter, isn't it?
That's right. But you have some good choices there and, and look, great, good luck with your career, and we look forward to hearing about the progress. And chief, thank you for, for bringing Chris and introducing him back to us. Appreciate that.
Thank you all so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Also, under delegations, tonight, we have representatives from communities and schools. And so I'll invite Tabitha to come forward and...
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to come and share with you all, and also thank you for your continued support. I want to say special thanks to Councilman Gaskin. He helped us out on Saturday. He was loading up groceries. We did a food distribution event, and he was at Calumet, so he stayed around and helped us pass out food to people in the community.
It was a lot of fun.
Yeah, a lot of fun. Yeah, he was out there dancing and everything. It's on the news. It was on WRVL at 7:00 on Saturday, so.
He was drinking a lot of coffee, wasn't he?
The nectar of life.
I just want to give you kind of an update on communities and schools and what we've been doing this past year. I gave you some information in the folder, so everybody up here can read. I'm not gonna read it verbatim. Just our outcomes from last year. You see one of the highlights. One, we had a 98.8 stay-in-school rate. 100% of our kids, CIS-involved kids, were promoted, and 100% of the seniors that were involved with CIS graduated last year. I have one site coordinator at Callaway, and if you see the stats from this past school year, Callaway High School actually surpassed the graduation rate for Troop County and for the state of Georgia with 91%. On the second page, you know, the gerated word, you know, March 13th was like the day that go, in infamy, when everything, like the world came to a screeching halt. And so did school, and, but not for us. A lot of people said, you know, "Great schools out. You guys aren't gonna be busy." I think this past year, we've been busier than we've been in my eight and a half years with communities and schools. Since the start of the pandemic, as you can see, we fed over 3,000 families. We've done a lot of virtual events. And one of the things that I wanted to express is that the pandemic exposed a lot of the gaps for our community, for our students, especially our students that are living in rural populations and those that are living in, in situations of poverty. We have had multiple families that were homeless that we've done emergency shelters for. We've been giving out food. I laugh about my staff. We're like Domino's making contactless deliveries of food, clothing items, hygiene items, whatever our kids need. There's also an article in here that our president of CIS National and Shaquille O'Neal, who's also a board member of CIS National, did about the 3 million kids that are missing because of the pandemic. They either haven't been in school, have fallen so far behind that they've just absolutely given up. And of those 3 million, several of them are right here in LaGrange and Troop County. A lot of the issues have been, you know, students aren't logging in, you know, they haven't been on Canvas, or they haven't been on whatever the software the schools are using. And we've reached out and provided internet service. But some of our kids, internet service is the least of their worries. You can't have internet service, and you can't get onto your classroom if you don't have electricity. A lot of our kids wanted to come back to school, but after being out for a year, I had a student, I went to the Walmart at 6:00 in the morning to shop for clothes, because the student had outgrown her clothes from the previous year, but she didn't have decent clothes to wear to school. So she was just gonna stay virtual, even though she was struggling. So I made, you know, we made sure that she had clothing to walk into school and be able to sit amongst her peers and not be ridiculed for how she looked and how she smelled. We've also had AmeriCorps members who are helping our elementary students. Not only do I have a person that's working with students face-to-face here, I have an AmeriCorps tutor that she started off living in Kanye. She lives in Marietta now, but she's been tutoring students right here in LaGrange from a long distance. We have several students that, you know, they're stuck at home, nothing to do. What do I do for, you know, after school? We partner with Humana. We have what's called Camp AC for students K through 12. It's an after-school program. They get tutoring, homework help, and there are 26 options, different STEAM programs. Kids are learning how to cook. They're doing yoga. They're doing Zumba. They're learning coding. There's a whole gamut of things that they can choose from to do, you know, after school. In addition to that, some of the, some of the negatives that we've seen, and, you know, you can talk about all the positives, but there are a lot of negatives. And one of the gaps that we saw was the need for mental health. We had so many students to lose loved ones, to lose parents, to lose multiple family members within the same weekend, and not have the resources or be able to find the resources to cope with those things. I've had phone calls from parents and messages, you know, I return phone calls, and to have a parent to say, "Well, you know, if I wasn't here anymore, at least my children could get my life insurance." That's just how bad it's been for some of our families. And this is what we see every day. In addition to that, our kids that are virtual at home, they are a prime target for our gangs. Had a young man, I said, "Why in the world would you want to be involved with a gang?" His response was, "They brought us food when we didn't have anything to eat." So they're targeting the kids that don't have the things that they need by providing those things, and now it's almost like they owe them something. And so they feel like these are the people out here that are gonna take care of us. So going forward, some of the things that we want to do is expand our reach. We already have a partnership with the US Attorney's Office. And as part of that, we have the Pops Club. CIS of Troop County is the only CIS affiliate, the only place in the United States that has Pops the Club in a middle school. When they came to visit us and the US Attorney's Office, I said, "I want to expand this to our middle school kids." I said, "Because those are the ones that are most vulnerable." And so by being involved with Pops the Club, it's pain of the prison system, and these are kids who have been impacted by a family member, close family member that's either in prison or, you know, just come out or just gone in. And as part of the club, they write, or they use their talent to draw. And those things are submitted. So this year, for the first time ever, we have six students whose works were published in this book. This book is sold on Amazon nationwide. And we're the only ones that have middle school students. So we have six published middle school students in this book called Dreamcatchers. They have their illustrations and their writings. And if you see it here, and there, there's a quote from one of the young ladies, whose experience was shared not only here in our local media, but also on BYU Radio, if you're familiar with that. So that's a nationally syndicated radio program. She was featured at CIS National, as well as in the LaGrange Daily News. She wrote a story, and I think that her dad is like under two of 55-year sentence. So this is what she's dealing with. And this is her way of coping with that. So we congratulate and, you know, commend our students for being able to, instead of seeing that as a, as a positive behavior, finding other ways to funnel that energy. And then on that last page... And then on that last page, it's just some of the flowers of the things that we've been able to do to keep our students engaged. We've had six virtual college tours. We have another one coming up at Kennesaw State. Monthly, I mean, weekly mentoring group meetings, virtually, mental health, virtual, you know, activities, as well as they had a family trivia game night to keep the parents and the students engaged. So, you know, CIS has always been in school, you know, to help kids. This year, our mantra had to change across the nation, and it's "In Schools and Beyond." So not only are we working with our kids in school, but we're working with our kids and our families as they struggle through, you know, the fallout from the pandemic. And so we've seen a lot, and like I said, it has exposed a lot of the weaknesses, but it's also shown our resiliency as an agency, as a school system, as a city. You know, I have a family all across the state, and the way things have gone in LaGrange have been, you know, a far cry different from, say, you know, my family that lives in Kentucky, or my family that's in Ohio. And so I commend you all for the decisions you made for, on our behalf, as citizens of LaGrange, which also affects the students that we work with every single day. And as an agency, we've had to do a lot more with a whole lot less. We were victim to the budget cuts at the state office. Mr. Stanley, who's been with us, he's like the grandfather of CIS, he's been with us for 21 years. And he, for 21 years, he was a state employee, and they looked, you know, across the budget and like, well, he's not really working for the state, so we, you know, that's one of those things that we have to cut. And I offered him the opportunity, you know, they told him he could stay with Department of Family and Children's Services and, you know, work as a case manager. And he made the choice. I didn't pressure him much, but to stay. But, I mean, he walked away from 21 years with the state, like, 10 more years, he could have retired. Now he's gonna have to work forever, like me. But to stay with CIS, because that's just how passionate he is about this work and what we do and the impact we have on these students. You know, towards the end of the year, we were about 2,800 students. We served by the end of the summer, that number had almost doubled, because not only were we looking at the kids that were at our sites, but they had siblings and other people were calling in a crisis. You can't tell people no. But we were able to, you know, forge forward, and with the help of the community, and my staff are awesome, we were still able to keep doing what we were doing and do a whole lot more for a lot more families. So thank you for your time and your support, and if you have any questions, I can't breathe in this thing, but I don't mind wearing it, because I was one of those people that, you know, had the bad batch of COVID that, you know, landed me, like I call it, my penthouse at Piedmont for a little while. So I'll wear it forever if I have to, because I don't ever want to do that again. So if you guys have any questions or comments...
Tabitha, I don't have any questions, but I just would like to thank you for what you do in the community, you and your staff and your board members. Communities and schools is one of those organizations that it's easy to support, because you do a great job, you track the work you do, you provide the data, you use models that have been proven to work across the nation, and I commend you for that, for your hard work and dedication, as well as the rest of your team. Certainly, you're part of what's making LaGrange a better place, and you're helping a lot of our families and a lot of our children in the process, and so we're grateful to you for that.
And I just want to concur with him, the mayor, because Tabitha, you always come, and you always keep us abreast about what you're doing, and the program works so well. And every time you give your report, I'm always touched by the people that you're working with, and that 100% graduation rate is enough for me, just to continue the program going. So thank you so very much, you and your staff, for all that you all are doing. I know what communities and schools do is more than just having a child with a lesson and things of that nature. You've become a servant parent once you start working with those children. So thank you all so very much. And Reverend Stanley, thank you for not leaving. Thank you all so much.
Any other comments or questions?
I'd like to say thank you. I really took note of the parents engaged. I feel like that has to have a huge impact.
It was two years ago, we were at 592 parents, and these numbers were before the pandemic even hit. So, yeah, to get to 1,800 is huge.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, too, want to take the time to thank you for your work in the school system. And, you know, since I've been on the council, I've been extremely hard on education, educational programs, to produce results. You have produced those results, you have surpassed those results. Unfortunately, I'm still disappointed, and maybe I'm out of order. I say that because of this. Every time you stood before us, I've asked the same question. Is anybody here from the school board?
I think so.
You do so much to support the children, and you guys deserve so much more support. I'm not bashing anybody, I'm just making note. I've been here, this is my fourth year, and it's disappointing to have you guys be overlooked for what you do. You're a vital, critical part of the educational process. You deserve better, and this city council, I think, will join me in echoing that we demand better for you guys. And am I wrong in that?
And just to clarify, I mean, even though there aren't any members of the Board of Education here, you do work in partnership with the Board of Education.
We do, and they support us financially as well.
Yeah, they do receive financial support.
I know they receive financial support, but take Reverend Stanley over here. That was a personal decision. He didn't have to do that. That was, his whole family is taking a hit. That's a gutsy move. Just, and I know it wasn't hard for him, because he's a man of love, but it's not hard for anybody in the educational system either. It's a matter of love, and I recognize that, and I respect that. And I would call it as I see it. Thank you for loving the children.
I think you have universal support from this council.
Thank you.
Please, please keep up the good work. I know you will.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you, Tabitha. We will move on to petitions and communications. We have a Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals recommendation on a request to annex and zone property located at 143 Bush Drive.
Mr. Costello, give this report.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. An applicant by the name of Al Zachary has requested that four parcels located at and immediately adjacent to 143 Bush Drive be annexed into the city, and that these parcels be zoned as general industrial. These properties are currently zoned as Troup County General Industrial and are collectively 18.65 acres. On Monday, March 8, 2021, the Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals met and recommended that this annexation and rezoning be approved. If it is your pleasure, I respectfully request that this proposed annexation and rezoning request be set for a public hearing on Tuesday, April 13, 2021.
Is there a motion to...
Motion to...
Call for public hearing?
Call for public hearing.
Okay. Have a motion second to call for public hearing on April 13. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Costello. Do any council members have anything they would like to report tonight?
No report. No report.
Okay.
I could pick up something, but not...
Okay. All right, well, we'll move on to the city manager report. Ms. Kelsey?
Yes, sir. I have a couple of the financial statements for February, as well as the payment of bills over $2,000 are attached to your agenda materials. I don't have any particular comments at this time. We are gearing up the budget. Department heads have received their paperwork, they're compiling their documents for my review. In April, we'll be prepared to present the budget to you, as we always do, probably the second week, the fourth week of May, your second meeting. So we'll kind of notify you as we get further down the road on what that date will be to make sure that you can all be there.
Sounds good. Any questions for the city manager about the financials?
Is that gonna be an all-day thing again?
That will be an all-day thing, yes. So we always look forward to the budget meeting. But, yeah, we'll get that scheduled and get, make sure the date works for everybody's calendar. Any questions for the city manager about the financials? Okay, Ms. Kelsey?
Also, this morning at work session, we discussed the sewer extension policy. As you know, we transferred the sewer division underneath the utilities, and Patrick and his staff has had time to review the existing policy, wanted to simplify it. There's no major changes. Staff would recommend approval of this policy.
Will we approve the sewer extension policy as proposed by the city manager?
Second.
I have a motion a second to approve the policy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Ms. Kelsey?
That completes our report, Mayor.
Okay. We'll move on to resolutions, and we have a resolution regarding the council's public safety concerns with parole, probation, and bond. This was discussed at some length in a work session. I think...
Chief Dagmar's here.
Chief, are you going to present it? I know there was a change to address Councilman Gaskin's concern.
Yes, I think that Councilman Gaskin... I'd pretend to review that, and I think it's consistent with his concerns.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So if there are any questions, is there a motion from the council on the...
Smack it.
Have a motion a second to approve the resolution. Any discussion? You would approve the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief. And so with that resolution passing, if the city manager, city clerk will prepare appropriate transmittal letter, I can send that to the state officials. Okay. We'll move on to first reading of ordinances. We have an ordinance rezoning property located at 508 Greenville Street from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to C3 General Commercial with R3 usage in conjunction with a special use permit.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to reclassify the used zone of real estate located at 508 Greenville Street and owned by New Ventures to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
And we also have under first reading, an ordinance rezoning property located at 507 Jenkins Street from R2 Residential to OIR Office Institutional Residential.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to reclassify the used zone of real estate located at 507 Jenkins Street and owned by Anjapali Rajiv to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
And we have a first reading of an ordinance amending the alcoholic beverages ordinance relating to brown bagging.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the code of the city to amend the alcoholic beverages ordinance relating to brown bagging, to provide for the charge of violating the brown bagging ordinance against an owner, to require notice prior to such charge, to provide for penalties, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
And we'll move on to second reading of ordinances. We have an ordinance modifying compensation for the office of mayor.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the code of the city to amend the code so as to modify compensation for the office of mayor, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
Much to approve.
Smack it.
Have a motion second to approve. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We also have a second reading of an ordinance amending the water and wastewater user charges, and I believe this was discussed in a work session today. There was a technical change from the original first reading.
Yes, sir. It's just a clarification on what we'll charge for multifamily. So we'll keep the $3,000 rate and provide a 50% discount for multifamily units.
Okay. And so there, with that technical change, we would need to first have a motion to authorize the introduction of a substitute ordinance.
Motion for a substitute ordinance.
Have a motion a second to introduce the substitute ordinance. Any discussion? All in favor of the substitute ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Now we will have the second reading of the substitute ordinance.
A substitute ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the code of the city to amend the water and wastewater user charges in certain special districts, to modify wastewater connection charges, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
Have a motion a second to approve the substitute ordinance. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Ms. Van Schor, would you like to close us?
Yes, sir. We're once again talking about litter cleanup. It was a record-breaking attendance in Calumet Neighborhood Park this past weekend. Nearly 120 people there collected, and estimated, and this was a conservative estimate, 8,000 pounds of trash. Our biggest cleanup to date, we just want to say thank you to Calumet Neighborhood Park Association, the Chambers Leadership Troup Class, the Wanas Club of LaGrange, Art Refuge, LaGrange Fire Department, and Police Department. So we wanted to show you a video of a day in the life of the LaGrange litter cleanup. So this was a fun video that Adam and Philip and Jeremy came up with.[1600.74]